The main purpose of this is for the board to listen, and so as a representative of the board, I'll listen and answer questions if we have any questions about what N S S has done during the past year, what we plan to do during the next year, how much more strategic planning we're going to do, and anything else.
It's got a little bit of strategic planning, just two steps, I think, and then we're supposed to do more in December.
No shortage of strategic planning. Alan is very supportive of that. Alan Watson, he feels we've not done enough strategic planning.
He wants more.
And Tesla's fact to build the entire next conference around nothing but strategic planning. When will you stop, Alan? When will you get this under control?
Now you're talking.
I apologize for being late, but the Canadian, NASA Canadians have just finished.
We're all just starting. Is Charlie Land's way?
Uh, he was at the table.
Are there people who have input to the infamous board?
Well, I'll ask a question. One of the things, speaking as just a member, one of the things that we've noticed is that there's some tension within the group or within the membership, especially if you read the net regarding Space Station Alpha and V C X, and there seems to be like two camps, and I'm wondering what the board is going to do about it, if anything.
Okay. Thank you. Um, well, it's not the board's job to deal with tension among members, of course, other than to suggest that, whether they flame a little less sometimes on the net, but probably would be the first to suggest that. Our position on these exact two topics, Space Station, R A L F A or whatever it is now, and Delta Clipper, has been a matter of some strain for me personally, and that's notwithstanding the fact that I'm a lawyer and a train full of mutually contradictory ideas in my head at the same time. Well, of course, they're not really mutually contradictory ideas. They are somewhat mutually contradictory approaches, and we've heard a lot of space station jokes and so on. I won't repeat them in spite of my ambitions to be the first stand-up space comic. Float upright. I was waiting for the never-zero-g joke. Our position on the space station has been a bit iffy. We've backed away from it a little bit, and if you've looked at, for example, Lori's testimony that was published in Ad After, you may have been able to figure that out.
Which Glanville?
Yeah, our position... Thank you. Well, our position has been consistently throughout in terms of saying, we're not for a name or a project, we're for capabilities that advance our cause. The trouble we have right now is that it's not at all clear whether we're going to get those or not. There's, some of you may have seen the news story, they replaced the space station model of the display case at the House Science Committee with a model of a Klingon battle cruiser. And when they did a news story about it, an unnamed staffer, who's probably Kerry Dawson, said that the reason was that they knew a lot more about the design of the Klingon battle cruiser than the model.
I passed the sound for Rick Verben in the Star Trek T and G cast, and everything loved. And it was in the record and everything, so I said it to him.
Well, and anyway, that's been a problem for us, too. We are, by the way, strongly in support of the notion that we begin building Klingon battle cruisers as soon as we master certain technology problems, but...
You would do the line?
Right. But, but really, we have argued, we were participants in the space station redesign, well, I should say many space station redesign inquiries and so on, and our position with all of those has been that there are certain functions we want to see, which are essentially those that promote the cause of space fair and civilization, those that help us learn about living and working in space, basically. We care about other stuff only to the extent it advances those causes in there. Like materials research is great if what you get out of it is a bootstrap into some sort of viable microgravity economy. If you don't get that, well, we don't really care. Our problem has been that what's been driving the space station situation now, boys, is probably it was politics, and it's not all bad. We thought cooperation with Russians would probably get us more for our money, and we made the point, which was even picked out by the New York Times, thanks to some good lobbying by Lori, the New York Times editorial board, that not only was this probably a good thing in that sense, but also it was better than having all those Russian scientists off there designing missiles for third world countries and such. But I will have to say that this, and if Charlie's out there, he'll hate me for this, but the space station has really drifted a lot from, you know, certainly what we thought we were supporting initially, and the big question for us has been, what next? I mean, it's easy to say, they ought to take the money out of the space station and spend it on stuff we like more, and if we were czars of the universe, to use a, to think, well, our professors used to ask that joke, sort of get you around all the equivocation and, you know, talk about possibilities, say, all right, well, forget all that crap. If you were czar of the universe, what would you do? If we were czar of the universe, we'd probably put this money into something other than the current space station. The question is, would we rather put it in the space station or into veterans programs and HUD, which is where it's going to go if it comes out of the space station? And we are sort of, we've been working on a fallback position in case space station's canceled, which basically boils down to give us a little bit of this money for stuff we like while you piss the rest away on other programs we don't care about. But obviously, that's a fallback position because you lose a lot, and we're much more in trying to get what we want, or as much of what we want as we can get out of something that goes ahead than trying to salvage something from a disaster because as screwed up as the space station program is, we're likely to get more of what we want out of it going forward than being canceled. Now, that's something about which reasonable people can disagree and do, and also something about which unreasonable people can disagree to do, and I call your attention to the nets once again on that front, but it is a problem for us, and we have, as I say, tried to sort of back away from the station as a program or name or concept and focus on the things we care about as a result of that. David, you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, Daniel Golden, NASA Minister, here two weeks ago was talking to Salt Lake City. He said at that point, he felt confident that the space station would pass this time.
Well, and he could hardly say otherwise. I'm not...
But I would agree that it would, it's probably in better shape than last year where we came within one vote, given that this administration is lobbying Democrats. I think it's likely to pass with a larger cushion than last year.
Oh, that sounds good. And so, if necessary, would it be possible for us to all petition Clinton to veto the HUD independent agencies bill if they don't include the money in it? That's what, that's what Mark Hopkins suggested.
We could ask him to do that. I think it's actually fairly likely that he will, for a variety of reasons, not least which is that when you're trying to push health care through, you're not going to be vetoing the I A appropriations bill, probably.
Well, Eric, this is a bluff, you know, to hopefully be able to...
Well, Clinton's been very fortunate, and none of his bluffs have been called in any other areas lately, so it's, I don't know. I mean, that's a tough question. And we, of course, have been very supportive to answer the second part of your question of Delta Clipper, and the only reason, in fact, we haven't done more than we've done on it is really the lack of good targeting information, that, you know, we found it difficult. We've gotten some help from McDonnell Douglas, but not as much as you would expect. We've gotten more help, frankly, from Tim Kager and other activists who are interested, and that is, while we're grateful to Tim for all his help, frankly, a damning indictment of what a job McDonnell Douglas has done lobbying for this because they shouldn't be the ones who are on top of it. They're the ones who get paid the big bucks. But we've done everything we could, really, to help it, and I think it's done a fair amount of good, although that battle isn't over yet. But I don't think those are mutually exclusive, except maybe in a philosophical sense, and of course, when people engage in flame wars on the net, that philosophical sense is the most important thing. I'd certainly love to see a space station designed and built on the Delta Clipper, design and build philosophy, rather than on the freedom design and not build philosophy. But we're sort of, you know, we're stuck with the world we live in, not the world we want to see, and all we can do is try to nudge it in the direction we want to go.
Is there any possibility that we will end up having to choose between Delta Clipper and space station?
I don't think so.
Different orders and matters.
Yeah, there's so little money involved in Delta Clipper by comparison to the space station that it's not likely at all. Claire?
Well, I was interested to hear a quote as tension between space station proponents and Delta Clipper proponents, because I was asked before I came down here to see if anyone truly believes that the space station could be built without a cheaper form of transport than the ship. Now, the Delta Clipper isn't really designed to have the, I mean, even the follow-ons to have the lift to do just that, but isn't there, in principle, a certain amount of...
How about the prototype?
Yeah. Here's a concept of plans.
I mean, they've already solved that.
To follow up on that, I think the concern about the station isn't so much whether we can afford to lift it to show, it's a question of whether can we afford to operate it to show.
Okay, and for that, Delta?
For that, Delta Clipper does sell the pro.
Yeah, I would also state that's exactly the point, and it's, and what's killing the station most is the operational expense, and if we had an alternative like Delta Clipper to reper, you know, for the resupply and this sort of thing, even if it was just the, the, not the people, not least upon the people, if it's just the material, that would make a big difference, it would make a big difference in the total cost of the station. So, you know, it's something that we should be working on. They're not mutually exclusive goals. We need something like Delta Clipper if we're going to have a space station.
That's exactly the point. They're not mutually exclusive in any way, shape, or form, and we support both, and anything else that has a possibility of making it work.
Furthermore, I would say that it is a mistake to do what some Delta Clipper supporters have done and present them as mutually exclusive, because we've had a number of cases where people have taken something small and nifty and presented it as a substitute for the space station, and the most glaring example of that was I S F. And I S F was doing great until people started saying, this is a substitute for the space station, and immediately it was squashed like a bug by the space station general, and I think it's a big mistake to make that kind of argument in the case of Delta Clipper or anything else. If you start saying, cancel space station, fund Delta Clipper, the space station forces, which may or may not be strong enough to save themselves, which are surely strong enough to kill Delta Clipper if they really want, will swing into action. I just think that's politically disastrous, even though I know a lot of people feel very strong about it on sort of philosophical grounds, that Delta Clipper is the right way to build things for space, and space station's the wrong way, and they're right about that. But that's a religious issue as much as it is a practical issue in this context.
Well, it'd be nice if we could get a Delta Clipper building time, that we help build the space, the service the space station, help build the space station.
So far, it might be different.
In the last year, we've gone through another series of committees and studies in various parts of the executive branch on the launch vehicle situation, and I wonder what kind of input N S S has had in these various spots.
Specifically on the launch vehicle, if you recall, we sent a letter on S S T O technology development to the membership. We got about 2,200 of those back, letters to the vice president specifically targeting the launch policy review, and the White House is aware we have those, and in fact, I had a letter going out the week before I left Washington to get an appointment with the vice president to deliver those to effect the policy. We've also happened to have a number of friends, including some people who are on our board, who are working very, very closely with the White House on that particular launch policy review.
And we also participated in the hearings on space transportation policy that the House Space Subcommittee had, and put our statement in there, which was circulated pretty broadly. It is not clear yet what the result of that's going to be, but we've certainly, and we've certainly been involved in pushing it, and indeed, in the public arena as well, we have. We had a press release featuring some very sophisticated econometric modeling conducted by yours truly, which was run in space news, you may have seen it, in which we said that if the White House went with its 1997 data, it would cost six to 10 billion dollars of taxpayer money, which we developed using this following sophisticated econometric modeling. We said, well, if you cut the current launch bill in half, and you multiply half of each year's current launch bill by the number of years they delay Delta Clipper, that's how much it costs to delay Delta Clipper, and we felt sure that Delta Clipper would be at least twice as cheap as the current system, and maybe more so. So, that was our very sophisticated econometric modeling, but it got printed in space news and aerospace and defense data and some of the others, as saying that, you know, this White House plan is going to cost, you know, six to 10 billion dollars, and they were somewhat defensive about that, actually.
The White House responded officially that, why was it? We were responding to a draft, and certainly, you know, they didn't mean for us to respond because it was just a draft, and that's exactly what we wanted, for them to recognize if they came out with this, what the response would be.
Michael, you have?
Yes, on the S S T O issue, I have one problem, and that is, I don't know how to answer the estimates of Jerry Gray and others, and when you see the numbers that are being bandied about, I forget which of the space transportation studies, which gives, for this option, it's, I don't know, using the refurbished titans, this, it's that much of a range, another one, and then the S S T O, they go from 10 to 30 billion in terms of range. I don't, I don't have a feel for what the technology is, and I was wondering, you know, what the known unks and the unk-unks are, and could you guide me? Are there any such studies that are more or less objective, and if not, you know, how does one go about getting some, as realistic as you go, estimates? Because a lot of it is vested in...
It's very difficult, because, you know, aerospace cost estimates have a tendency to be unreliable, and they tend to err both on the high and the low sides. I mean, for example, the absurd NASA 90-day study on Mars missions generated a figure that was $500 billion, which was, of course, designed to kill the notion of the Mars mission, and did. I'm not, I'm not a cost accountant, and Scott Pace can walk you through the benefits and disadvantages of these studies much more effectively than I can, but I think that it's fair to say there are a lot of unknown unknowns in this area, and that there are, you know, in some respects, a Delta Clipper-style approach, or, and I say style because it's not the program we're supporting, again, so much as the approach, and I think that's an important thing to make clear, that that style approach has got its own risks, but on the other hand, no pain, no gain, no risk, no reward, and refurbishing titans is one of the sillier ideas. I mean, it's almost spending a lot of money to get something crappy, and Scott Pace does have the best quote on that subject. When the industry was very upset about the possibility of releasing surplus ballistic missiles, he said, there's something wrong with an industry that's thrown into a panic by the prospect of releasing 30-year-old technology. And I think that's right.
The Mormon study was just released, and it refused to price single-station orbit technology because they did a wide survey from ministry and NASA, and the numbers were so far off, they said at this point, clearly in the technology development program, there's no way you can guess, estimate even, what that will cost.
And our answer to that is good, that we're not saying go out and build a fleet on now. What we're arguing for is an X-plane type approach, build a little fly-on, as they say, in which you work out the technology step by step, and if you run up against things that wind up being a deal killer, then you stop, and you spend a few hundred million, and you probably develop some useful technology anyway, and you're no worse off. They did that with the X-planes. They did some experiments with tailless aircraft back in the 50s, and discovered that they weren't great, but you couldn't control them until you had the kind of computers we only have now, and so they stopped, but they learned a lot, and they went on. Now we're building tailless aircraft, but, you know, that's the kind of thing you do in an X-plane type approach, and it was very effective in aviation, it's likely to be effective here, and we're not asking Congress to sit down and fund a fleet of Delta Clipper spacecraft carriers in the world today. And indeed, while I'm not sure I'd actually oppose that, I certainly wouldn't cheer it on at this point. I think the last thing we want to do is repeat the shuttle experience or the station experience and decide we're going to spend a whole lot of money on something now before we really know what we're doing.
Glenn, just a quick follow-up on that. I would make a general comment, I'll submit without proof.
Speak up for the people in back.
I would submit without proof that the wide range in estimates on how much it will take these vehicles to develop does not derive so much from the technical uncertainty as from the agendas of the various people that come up with the estimates.
I think Mormon would agree with you.
Yeah, I think that's right.
That's why he refused to put them in, because he didn't think they were really, people had their own agendas, and so...
I think Glenn's method of economic estimate is probably as good as any of the others we've seen.
And he didn't waste any time or paper to do it.
Jeff Lewis, you had your hand up.
Today, Stan Burowski, who will be speaking on the same topic at lunch tomorrow, made a presentation which was very well received about nuclear-powered spacecraft, who says the only proven technology, and it's with an estimated $5.2 billion budget cost. Do we have a position on nuclear propulsion systems?
Yeah, we've been involved in the nuclear issue. We like nuclear propulsion systems in some ways. I mean, first, if you want a specific impulse of over 1,000, you've got nuclear or nothing, basically, at least in any reasonable amount of thrust, you'll get more with ion engines and stuff. Anti-matter, yeah. We strongly support anti-matter propulsion.
How about laser propulsion?
Laser propulsion has huge... We're for all research.
Exactly. If it has any chance at all of opening a space fair and civilization, we're for it.
Our involvement, yeah, we support and have indeed encouraged it on several occasions, small amounts of targeted research in things like laser propulsion. Again, I would actually not support somebody saying we should build a laser launch site tomorrow, because we don't really know how, but there's a lot of research we can do on that, that I think we ought to be doing, to the point where we do know how down the line. With regard to nuclear propulsion, it's a little tricky, because we do know how to do that, we've done it a little bit. We've been involved mostly in a defensive posture on this because there have been efforts by Jeremy Rifkin, tireless champion of technological stagnation. That's not my phrase, it's the new republic, and various other groups to block the use of both nuclear power sources, such as RTGs, and also nuclear propulsion in space, and as you may know, we entered the litigation regarding the Ulysses space probe on that front, and had some counter demonstrations down at the Cape led by the Orlando chapter in that context, and so on. And we've presented some testimony and so on on that subject from time to time, and our basic position is that the benefits of using nuclear propulsion and nuclear power in space properly outweigh the risks. And, for example, regarding to Ulysses, we point out there are always marginal benefits from understanding the solar variability and solar climate and all that sort of thing, and that those are quite substantial, raising the risk of any major disasters as well. Our goal on all that has really been to preserve the possibility of nuclear propulsion later. If you're interested in Mars missions and so on, nuclear propulsion is not quite essential, but it's damn helpful, and that's an option we want to keep open. That's somewhat unpopular, actually, with people in this country, Canada having had firsthand negative experiences with nuclear space power. But I, I think that that's more an indication of why it shouldn't be employed in low Earth orbit in crappy satellites than of why it's not fit for space use at all, and I think Bob Zuberger would agree with that. Ed?
Well, as a society's representative at the U N, I think we've got to add, Glenn, to what you said very briefly. The United Nations, in the last three years, has developed these 12 principles, which the Chairman of the Committee on Peaceful Uses of Outer Space at the U N had published, and is an official U N document, was later adopted by the General Assembly, does not have the force of law, but is a General Assembly resolution, these 12 principles. And they deal with nuclear power sources, the RTGs that Glenn was just mentioning, and so forth, in outer space, and they set forth very specific standards, which we hope will be observed internationally on a voluntary basis by the province of Russia, by the United States, by the Japanese, by the Chinese, and so on. And it seems that in our own self-interest and in the self-interest of these other governments, that is exactly what has happened. So, there is progress being made on nuclear power sources and nuclear propulsion in outer space internationally. Thank you.
Would those resolutions prohibit nuclear-powered spaceships? Would those revolutions prohibit nuclear-powered spaceships?
They have nothing to do with spaceships at all.
Does that have to do with it?
They have to do with what?
They have, they have to do with the general principles of how you will deal with nuclear power sources in outer space. Bear in mind Great Slave Lake, which we just heard about from this distinguished panel, and bear in mind the other incidents where nuclear power sources have perhaps created problems for planet Earth. It deals with the planet Earth's problem of how do you deal with nuclear power sources so you won't harm each other's satellites, so you won't pollute the atmosphere, and so you won't do a whole host of things, and these are what the 12 principles deal with.
Ed, could you mention one or two of the most important of the principles, since it's often said less briefly?
Well, I don't have them in the back of my hand at the moment because they're kind of old hat. Right now, we're thinking about the Moon Treaty in the U N and things of that nature, which are much more current. But as far as the principles go... It's the safety assessment. It's how safe is an RTG power source? What are the Russians doing with their nuclear power sources? They've used them far more extensively than the United States have, and what are the levels of notification that should be given in case of re-entry? Various things of that nature are what the 12 principles deal with, and they're very broad, and they're very well worked out by both the Scientific Subcommittee with experts over a period of three years, and the Political and Legislative Committee. I get the 12 principles, and we'll stick them in ad astra one day or something, if you're really interested.
Well, I mentioned our strategy on nuclear space power has often been one of just reaction, and I want to mention, we also have sort of, since our Ulysses experience, been adopted by the nuclear space community. They held a conference in Albuquerque last fall, invited us to come. I gave a paper and talked to them about how there really could be public support, and there is a constituency out there to support the work they're doing.
For which they were pathetically grateful.
It is unbelievable how grateful they are. It's very well received, and they appreciated our work so much on the Ulysses and the RTG issue that may be necessary again on Cassini and possibly Pluto mission. So, I think we aren't just always reacting to communities that's very thankful for our work.
Yeah, I should stress, we, in Cassini, we commented on the Cassini environmental impact statement, and stressed, again, the benefits versus the risks, and that was part of the, you know, the environmental impact statement process is supposed to weigh risks against benefits, but as you might imagine, usually the focus is mostly on risks, and we actually criticized the draft environmental impact statement for not saying enough about the benefits in it, and all of that, of course, goes into the record if it's litigated later and so on. We've tried to be involved, and we, in fact, pressured NASA. There was at one point talk that they were going to abandon these nuclear power sources and scale the mission back purely to avoid a fight, and we had RTGs onboard, and we threatened to make a big stake if they did that, and there's nothing like a gun to your head, put a little steel in your spine when you're a bureaucrat, and I'm not swearing that our action made the difference, but it certainly has been her. David, again?
Yeah, I understand that, from Ed Finch, that, okay, that the 1967 Moon Treaty would allow us even to use nuclear devices on the moon to excavate, you know, material for having underground moon base.
The Moon Treaty, you know, the Moon Treaty nor the Outer Space Treaty say anything about using nuclear power in space, except in terms of some sort of general provisions about avoiding harm and contamination.
It says it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't violate.
It doesn't mention it, actually. It does not. All it says in the 67 Treaty is military fortifications are permitted. You can have a military base on the moon as long as you don't exclude other people, and they may reasonably come and respect what you're doing and so forth and so forth. And you're allowed to have military personnel also under 67. There are a lot of things you can do on the moon, and you have picked out a...
Detonation, detonation nuclear devices in space, I believe, it does come under some of...
Oh, that's different. That's different. That's totally different.
And he said something about excavating using nuclear devices?
It's totally different.
I didn't understand. Nothing to do with nuclear bombs. I didn't understand. I was thinking in terms of, yeah, bulldozers and stuff. Did you mean using nuclear bombs?
Yeah, test ban underneath the moon or surface.
That actually would probably violate this loaded test ban treaty, which prohibits any nuclear explosions outside the Earth's atmosphere.
Might be a problem with that, though.
Yeah, you know, they did, they had this thing here on Earth called Project Ploshear, where somebody said, gee, if we set off atom bombs underground, we'd get this really big hole, and they did a few of those, and they said, well, now what do you do with a really big, somewhat radioactive hole? And they said, we can store natural gas in them, but it turned out they leaked, and the gas was a little radioactive anyway, and there really wasn't much of a market for big, somewhat radioactive holes in the ground, so there may be a bigger market for that on the moon, but, you know, more research is required to establish that fact.
The Russians did a similar test, and it turned out to be a total mess, and very unhappy with the results.
The test ban treaty, the downside of the test ban treaty from our perspective... The Test Ban Treaty, the downside of the Test Ban Treaty from our perspective, by the way, is that since it prohibits all nuclear explosions in outer space, not merely nuclear bombs, because the 67 Outer Space Treaty says you can't have nuclear weapons in outer space.
Yeah, that's what.
But the Test Ban Treaty says you can't have nuclear explosions. And as.
It's tested.
Right. And as to the United States, what that means is Orion-style drives, which are propelled by nuclear explosions, most of you are probably familiar with those, are verboten to the United States and Great Britain and the former Soviet Union. However, other countries aren't bound by the loaded Test Ban Treaty, including some nuclear powers and space powers like China and France. And the Outer Space Treaty only prohibits nuclear weapons. And I would be prepared to argue, and I think it's correct, that a nuclear explosive used to propel a spacecraft is not a weapon and therefore is not prohibited by the Outer Space Treaty. I don't know that this is an issue that's likely to come up in the near future, although I have hinted broadly at it in my Space Law textbook in the hopes that some nuclear power with space ambitions like India would take the hint and try and do something.
Well, I turn to support what Glenn just said on this subject. It's a delicate, difficult subject, but you've stated it very well.
Well, thank you.
Margaret?
Yeah, given the fact that there is some real possibility that NASA as we know it may not exist in the near future, maybe five years, maybe 10 years. And I know there are a number of people considering this possibility. Has the society begun to consider what the NSF's role would be in a post-NASA world?
Yeah, we've thought about it. I have to say, it's somewhat shrinking, sinking feeling.
Well, yes.
Not because, not because we're tickled pink with NASA as it exists now. The real question is whether if NASA's gone, we'll have something we can work with, or we'll have a large, somewhat radioactive hole.
No, I, this is, this is.
And this, well, great. And that's a real, I mean, you can imagine a world in which NASA went away, in which things were better. And the line that we've tried to use is to say, when people raise this up, to say, it's not like you make a large, somewhat radioactive hole, but rather it's like the changeover from the War Department to the Defense Department, that you've got a change in mission. So you've somewhat changed the organization and its structure and its purposes and its rationale. But, but you don't get out of the business of having armies just because you go from a War Department to a Defense Department. You don't get out of the business of doing space because you get rid of NASA and you say, well, we've got a Defense Space Agency, we've got an R and D Space Agency, and we've got a Gathering Science or Commercial Space Agency. And you could do that and wind up actually getting more rather than less. But you could also screw it up easily. And I leave it to you observers of the legislative process to decide which is more likely.
Also, there are many agendas. That's a trap, a pot of money. And you could easily imagine where some of the field centers went to National Labs and where some of the other programs were, where manned space.
Oh, yeah.
Probably would be not at that point, right? I mean, we're talking, and that would be the most critical element for us, I would think. And I just wondered if we've begun to consider what our role would be, not whether this is good or bad, or even whether this is likely. But if this happens, what would we do?
I must say, I'm very dubious that it's going to happen. I can't remember the last time a large defective bureaucracy died. Off the top of my head, I don't.
Or even a large Genefact.
They change names, they change heads, they, there are modifications in them, but they don't really go away. I mean, when they cured polio, the March of Dimes didn't dissolve.
You may recall Ronald Reagan was elected, had a promise to abolish the Education Department.
I think that space is one of the few things that is considered somewhat of a luxury item in terms of our pursuit. No matter how we do this, it is not like agriculture. I mean, you're always going to need that, right? It is not like, you know, the Department of Defense or something like that. Space, I think, is unique in this sense in being considered a luxury. And I'm not saying, let's not consider whether it's going to happen or that's good or that's bad.
You're right.
But what do we do?
Well, our, our problem is that when we talk about preserving the manned space program, and I really should say rude space program or whatever, but the truth is, there isn't really one now. And that's part of our problem. I mean, there's a space shuttle that people go up and down on and nobody can quite figure out why. And there's a space station that exists now. It's a lot of very expensive paper. And so the question is, if you break all that up and you want to salvage a manned space program, what's it going to be? And it's hard to imagine a viable space program that puts people in space that is part of a shrunk down or split up NASA right now. And it's difficult to figure out what the rationale for that would be that would sell at a time when NASA would be busted up.
I think more in terms of the international picture, you know, what, are there other places where we would look in an international sense?
Well, we might try to do something cooperative with ESA or with the Russians or maybe we could get rides on some Japanese rockets. They might let us, you know, send one of our astronauts up in their space program and then visit a Shenzhou Space Station every now and then or something, just to show that, you know, we're their clients and all. But I think that, I think it's very difficult to deal with it. And frankly, my, and we don't have an official position in this, but my gut is that the best we could salvage from that would be to try and salvage some R and D programs that may get into space cheap enough that a manned space program would need something like a NASA to support it.
Is there any possibility that NASA could be absorbed into a larger science and technology administration?
That's being misguided.
That's more plausible than the bust up scenario. And I'm not sure.
Not necessarily better.
Yeah, I'm right. I'm not at all sure that it's better. And it, but it really isn't as easy as it sounds. And a lot of people like to say that, but the differences in scale and mission between, say, NASA and NSF are just colossal. I mean, there's almost an order of magnitude difference in budget. NASA is like a heavy metal organization. I mean, they, they build things occasionally and they operate big things. And, you know, they really, they, they don't have a bunch of scientists working on grants out there who really do their own work. They have field centers, they have employees. They're not an organization whose sole job is to hand out money to other people who do the work. And it's, if you were to put NSF in with NASA, my guess is that NSF would vanish without even making much of a splash. And I think the NSF people think that too. So I think they would be the biggest opponents of that. Actually, they might like it less than NASA. I don't, you.
Well, some of them unrealistically see NASA's having this big pot of money that they go after, which is, I think, similar to the scientists who are against the human spaceflight program, thinking that they'll get that money if the human spaceflight program is canceled. That is not a realistic assumption. The big science agency is sometimes favored by people who think that would elevate the importance of science, possibly to a cabinet level position. We, I think, have seen with the abolishment of the National Space Council back into the opposite of science and technology policy, that space can easily get lost in a science agency. And I think we have fought very hard to keep a single person within the White House working on space. And therefore, I think ultimately, both groups potentially lose.
I would be inclined to oppose that because I think the reason for space isn't science. And this is a point we have to keep making, you know, because they'll say, well, scientists tell us there's not much scientific reason to build a space station or do whatever it is.
And we might agree.
Yeah, and we might agree, you know. We're not interested in science, we're interested in satellite. And those aren't the same things. And indeed, I would, I sort of believe in going on the offensive and saying, there's no reason to do space science except for satellite. And if we're not going to live on the moon, who really cares what it's made of?
Well.
I mean, yeah, sure we care, but we don't care anymore about that than any of the other scientific facts we could find a lot cheaper.
Well, with the industrialization of space, outer space too, you don't like it?
Yeah.
About the settlement and development.
I mean, I sort of feel like if all we're going to do is gather pure abstract knowledge so that we just sort of know more about the world we live in, then the Human Genome Project is a better place to put our money than a mission like Cassini because it's just as quote unquote interesting in terms of abstract knowledge. And it's more likely to actually help people on Earth. Because if we're never going to go live in outer space, what things look like around Saturn? Just.
It's pretty.
Don't they? Yeah, it's pretty, you know, but so are paperweights at some gift shop out there and they're a lot cheaper.
Margaret here raised a question. I'd like to focus on one aspect of it. The National Labs, the National Labs, the National Defense Labs, who are now looking for a different mission, and some of which which overlaps with space, you know, military, and I'm not quite sure how. I hear that a study has been made that shows that there is very, very high overlap in terms of the abilities between NASA centers and the Sandias of the world. What, do you see any kind of relationship developing there? Is it time for the NSF to come up with a statement on that?
I don't know. I actually would sort of be reluctant to stick my hand into that particular meat grinder. I know a little bit about this work because back, back when I was practicing lawyer, one of the things I worked on was the Semtech Consortium, which we were putting together. And one of the most important things we were told is, you have to find something for the National Labs to do here. Because the end of the Cold War was already looming. And we were all like, there's nothing for the National Labs to do here. But we found something because we had to, because they were very powerful. But they're very different culturally from NASA. And they'd be thrilled. Look, I, I live a hop, skip, and a jump on a radioactive frog from Obridge National Lab, where they have radioactive frogs living in little ponds where they store the waste. And they would be thrilled if we started building Orion Drive spacecraft today because they build bombs there. And they'd love to have a job building more bombs, especially some wheat clean little ones that were technically sweet and that somebody wanted to buy. But really, I think that's very politically charged. And I certainly would want to be the one out front suggesting that NASA be folded into the National Labs or the National Labs be folded into NASA. And I suspect that all there's a lot of overlap in the kind of technical work they do. I don't think it would be very easy to sort of rationalize that. The labs have got a tough time. A lot of them may well wind up sort of withering away. But I don't think that politically it's such a good idea for us to get too involved in that.
Okay, just a quick follow up. Remember the SDIO, the Clementine, and all, they've been focusing to a large extent on those labs, who also did the Cray and the Can.
Yeah, there's a lot of great, you know, there's a lot of great stuff at the National Labs, even though they're, they're a lot like some of the NASA things in that there are a lot of really good people embedded in a fairly obsolete organization. And it would be great if somebody like Al Gore or someone could reinvent the whole federal R and D apparatus and make sense out of it. And I hope they do. But again, I'm not sufficiently optimistic about the outcome of the politics on that, that I think it's something we ought to be pushing for.
It's 8:57. Why don't we figure one more question? And there's a second session of this Monday?
Yeah.
Glenn, I, I think that we ought to spend one minute in this meeting talking about space debris. The New York Times had a very large article right across one page inside on space debris. William J. Broad wrote that article. He talked to me about it. I think we should consider whether the National Space Society, because it involves the environment, which is a very broad, powerful-reaching subject to the American public today, I think we ought to start thinking about what the NSF's position is on space debris. What is it doing to launch windows? What is it going to do in the year 2000? What is it going to do to peacekeeping from outer space? I mean, space debris is going to get to be more and more important as we go forward here. If we're going to have a bunch of new iridium satellites and so forth, we're going to have a lot more stuff up there. So I think we ought to start thinking about a policy position on space debris. And I wondered if any of the panel wanted to comment on that.
Who do you think ought to start working on that paper, Glenn?
We have a space environmental, well, first I should say, we are fearlessly against space debris.
Bravo.
We have an environmental position paper which does talk about that some. It is in some sense a hard issue to work on because it's such a motherhood issue. Everybody's against space debris. The question is, what do you do about it? Of course, there've been some changes that the US and Europeans and the Russians have made in their operations, such as venting fuel from upper stages and so on, that have already substantially reduced the creation of new space debris, such that I think it's an important issue. But I think it's promising that it's more, most appropriately handled at sort of the engineering level within various space programs, though I'm prepared to hear otherwise. We explored a little bit the notion of trying to do something on it with the Association of Space Explorers on the theory that one of their charter issues allegedly is safety in outer space. So they haven't really done much on it. And we thought maybe they'd be interested in doing something with this on that.
But I talked to Geneva today, to the Chairman of the COPUS Committee, and he has informed me that they have had a working group within the Committee on Peaceful Uses of Outer Space dealing with space debris. And the AIAA Engineering Group, you just mentioned, has a very strong working group on this. NASA itself spends between $5 and $15 million a year on space debris research. There are a number of places where space debris is being studied. And if that proceeds on the time schedule that we presently see it, by the time we get through with the Moon Treaty problem in the UN, we're going to be onto a space debris treaty.
Well, I think that.
And maybe we need one internationally because remember, in the old days, when the old USSR was out launching us five to one, there was an awful lot of debris being created up there. And it's both natural and manmade.
Well, I think that's right. I guess the reason we haven't made it a high priority issue is precisely because all these other groups are looking at it. And I don't think it's requiring much effort to convince people space debris is something bad.
I think we may have the alternate concern, though. It could be that all these groups will come up with something that is detrimental to the development of space.
Well, that's right.
They may come up with a really rigorous, it's our way, we have to do a debris impact statement every time you launch something.
And if they do that, we'll oppose it. And in fact, the closest thing to that that we've dealt with was that pretty stupid Jeffords Markey Anti-Space Advertising Act, which some of you may recall. And that was a cheap way for a few members of Congress to get on TV in a hurry. And the bill was very badly drafted. This was in response to the space marketing of quote unquote billboards in space plan. And we were quite critical of that. And we were impressed with our criticism. And indeed, I think it was at Markey's office that actually called us to ask us what we thought about their bill before they'd seen our press release. And after they saw our press release, they probably wish they hadn't asked. But, you know, we certainly would oppose anything that looked like it was going to be detrimental and wouldn't be on what was necessary.
It's fine. We need at least keep a finger in that and know what's going on so we don't get blindsided.
It is at nine o'clock. We, we resume this on Monday. So there'd be an opportunity to deal with any of those.
And we can always discuss these issues in the bar or hospitality suite.
Well, I was also going to mention it's mainly turned into a policy committee meeting. And there's one of those tomorrow afternoon at.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Policy committee open meeting, which is, since we never have a policy committee forum at the ISDC, there's not a meeting of the policy committee. It is a meeting with the policy committee. So anyone who wants to talk about this stuff more with at least me and any other policy committee members who show up can do so.
And I would take it as great news that no one had any membership questions at this time of meeting. They're talking about policies. So the administrative things must be going very loud.
I think we stand fearlessly for having membership too.